Okay, let's call to order the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting. It's 6:03 or 02. And let's begin with reviewing the agenda. It's the time for any moving things around or subtractions, or in some cases additions. Does anyone have anything? No public here to move the public comment forward possibly. So all right, any announcements from anyone? No, okay. We're light in that category too. So let's review and hopefully we all reviewed the July 7 minutes and let's have a motion to approve them. We can discuss afterwards.
A motion that we approve the minutes of June 7, 2021.
July 7.
Oh, July 7, sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Prudence, great. Any discussion?
I have one very minor change. I was listed as seconding the motion to stop what's it called, disband, no.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
And it wasn't you.
And I was, I wasn't there at that point.
Oh, you left, yeah. Well, maybe you can just strike it. I don't know if a second's necessary for adjournings.
I just can't take the credit, sorry.
This meeting, we approved the previous one.
That's pretty funny. It's, I thought I heard two voices on that, so I just picked you.
Any other edits? Oh, someone else coming?
Kate's coming in.
Hi, Kate.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
We're in the middle of approving the minutes. There's been a motion, it's been seconded. I don't know if anyone has any edits or questions or anything else about them. Hearing none, how about let's vote? We can on approving them, so let's do a roll call, right?
Yes.
So how about Dan?
I.
Okay, and Kate?
I, I trust you guys.
Prudence?
I.
I as well. Okay, it passes all in favor. Okay, the kind of meat of our meeting here is discussing the municipal planning grant opportunity. Yeah, it's offered every year and it's funds from the state. I'll just say a couple of things. I know Sue definitely is the expert on this. But reading through the grant, it says that, you know, based in statute that it's the grant program is created to promote compact settlements surrounded by working lands like ag and forest and open space. So it says that that's given priority, but there's other, you know, specific kind of priorities that are relevant this year, and that was in Sue's memo. I don't know, I guess that's all I'd say right now. I'll just stop there and let Sue take it away.
Yeah, so we've been really successful with this grant. You know, basically it needs to have a strong tie to the town plan. We can ask for a maximum grant of 22,000, which would require a $10,000 match. It's I thought the deadline was September 30th because I read it wrong and read it quickly, but it's actually November 1st. So we have a little extra time if we come up with ideas that we can vet them a little bit more. There's a strong focus this year on basically COVID recovery and housing projects. And any kind of innovative statewide models that you might want to do. So those are kind of, they would give you extra points. But it can be used for all sorts of things, natural resources inventory by PED. You know, something for agriculture, more land use. I would say that there's another grant program that's coming up this year, which is the Bylaw Modernization Program that we are looking at for some housing, you know, we're hoping that some things will come out of the housing study that will then want to implement in the land use regulations. So ideally, we would look at that grant program for land use regulation updates.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
That Bylaw Modernization was on the municipal planning grant document, right?
Yes.
Is it separate from it or it's?
It's going to be a separate pot of funds, so we can apply for both, though.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yep.
Quick question to add it and then I just now is VSHA also a part of that since they got a huge funding?
Different, different funding. That's the Vermont Housing, VHSI. VHFA is Vermont Housing Finance.
Right, but I, yeah, BSA Vermont State Housing. They got a pretty good
VSHS, alright.
Yeah.
Yes, Vermont State Housing Authority.
So I didn't know if they were inclusive with, because they are putting out also for people who own buyers.
Yeah, that's totally separate than this, this fund. This is pretty much for planning. And goes to the municipalities. And if we wanted to do a project with a neighboring town, we could approach a town and, you know, have a consortium application as well. So typically, you know, it's a fairly, as far as grants goes, it's a fairly easy grant application. But we do need to justify the costs, and so that often requires us to be working with a consultant, talking with a consultant, making sure that what we're proposing is a reasonable cost. So that's the kind of what takes the most time leading up to it. And as you could see in the memo, we've kind of looked at using it every other year. We are competing. There's a pot of funds that is designated for the Wyndham region, which is the, which is 27 counties. It's Wyndham County, two, one in, two in Bennington and, or three in Bennington and one in Windsor County. It makes up the Wyndham region, so we are competing against those towns.
So they designate pots of money by region, obviously. So it's not us against every other
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. So like I said, we've been successful. We do have a grant that we, with the housing study, that should be wrapping up in the fall. So I'm comfortable going after another one, but it could put us a little bit at a disadvantage if they look at it and say, oh, Brattleboro had one last year and this town didn't apply, so. But it's worth, it's worth attempting.
And to put, since housing is such a big topic these days, I think it might, even though we're going to talk about the housing study later, I think it might be worthwhile in this agenda item to know what we're going to get out of the housing plan, right? I think I reviewed it and it says that there's two parts. It'll be a housing needs analysis. The other part will be a comprehensive strategy to address the needs that are identified.
Yeah.
So there won't necessarily be by law modernization or implementation with that, or they're just, they're flat out won't be.
Right, there, there will not be.
There will not be.
Yeah, so their task is, so the needs analysis is actually almost finalized, so that's, well, part of it is looking at the data. So what does the census and other sources have to say about the housing situation and kind of income in the area? So and then there's the survey, which is more of the qualitative, I always get those wrong. Type data and interviews. And then the second part of it is actual strategy. So putting together different things that the town could be doing, looking at different programs, making recommendations of what we can do to hopefully trigger more housing development.
Okay.
To meet the needs.
Okay.
But yeah, there might be recommendations of land use regulation changes, but they actually won't do the work.
Okay. And then you know, in the past, we've, in the planning commission, we've talked about that document, which the state likes bringing up the zoning for great neighborhoods. And there was that review that they did, a partial review of our land use regs and recommended some, some changes. But that, and that's a priority too of this current MPG year, but, but, but that's separate from the other thing, the housing by law modernization thing. So
Yeah.
So if we wanted to do housing, the, the, the land use regs, if we wanted to modify them to make housing better or easier or more accessible, then we shouldn't necessarily aim to do that with this, because there will be the other opportunity later, which is only for that.
That's correct.
Okay, because I was coming into this thinking that I was going to advocate for housing in, you know, zoning implementation for the municipal planning grant, but I don't want to advocate for that now. If, if then it'll be redundant or then we'll miss out or we'll have no need for the other one later.
Yeah, I think if you're thinking in terms of the land use regulations, the, like, the actual language, I think the Bylaw Modernization Grant is a better, probably a better fit. But we might yeah. You know, as staff, we know that there's some issues with the zoning, so we've talked about some of them here, but there's, there's probably more that we haven't talked about that pertaining to housing. For example, our residential neighborhood zoning districts, like we consolidated a bunch of different residential zoning districts into one. And, you know, there are, the neighborhoods around downtown have sometimes the setbacks are not working. So we're almost like, well, do we need more than one zone? Do we need two residential zones or something different? So that's something that would be good to be looked at under by law modernization. If we wanted to do something totally different, like we've talked a lot about in the office of having pre-approved accessory dwelling units, like that, you know, you can kind of say, I want an accessory dwelling unit, and you come into the office and we say, oh, here's like four or five different models that can be pre-approved. That is something that would be more along the lines of this municipal planning grant, because then we could go out and hire design professionals to help with those kind of ideas.
So there's still a lot of, from that review for zoning for better
For great neighborhoods.
For great neighborhoods, there's still quite a bit that we could
That we could do.
Okay, so the amendments that we, that the select board just approved last month, and there's some, some of those are a little related, but there's a long way to go.
Yeah, I mean, the, the two major ones we did, which was making the three, four and five unit dwellings permitted rather than conditional and getting rid of the density standards, those were big. But yeah, the others were kind of minor and to make them look better. And hopefully make it easier for people to create housing, but there are some, I think, more overarching ones that we could do.
Okay.
I have a quick question about that. Is there any? If they are going to do an accessory dwelling unit, is it required that they have a long-term tenant in there? And is that long-term defined? Just I think about people abusing it, doing, using it for short-term rentals or, you know, not specifying it as for local or income-driven type of housing?
So an accessory dwelling unit is permitted by right by the state, so anybody could come in and, and get a permit for it as long as it's accessory to an an owner-occupied residence. So in Brattleboro, we actually allow, like, the, the owner of the property could live in the accessory dwelling unit and rent out the front house.
Oh, okay.
You know, or vice versa, that the owner could live in the home and rent out the accessory dwelling unit. In Brattleboro, we also are not currently regulating short-term rentals, so we don't care whether it's a short-term. I don't want to say we don't care, but we are not regulating whether or not it's on Airbnb or whether it's a long-term rental.
Got it.
Nor, nor the income, you know, the, the amount of the rent. When, for a little context, when a couple of years ago, there was some concern about short-term rentals, but at that time, it was really an issue of tax fairness. Where short-term rentals were not paying, some of the taxes that bed and breakfast and ends were paying. And that got resolved and that kind of kind of resolved the issue, which isn't to say that they can't have impacts on neighborhoods. But we just, we haven't felt the need yet to regulate them. But we're constantly watching that.
I feel like it might, I mean, I think some regulation is, should be discussed. I'm sure, I know there's discussing it at the state level, but, you know, on our level too. That's a lot of people are talking about the out-of-state buyers. I mean, that's exactly what they're doing. They're taking homes and turning them into short-term rentals, which is great for them, but, you know, this is part of the housing shortage. It's all, it's all tied into it.
Yeah, we do have some data from the housing study on the current situation of short-term rentals in Brattleboro.
Yeah, hopefully they address the options of how to address that.
You mean the survey that's
No, just the data that they were able to collect on the number of short-term rental houses. I don't think anybody yet has really cracked the code of how to, from a zoning perspective, you know, I've seen models where you can only have so many, you know, a stay for so long, and that is not anything from a zoning enforcement that we want to be involved with. You know, trying to figure out how long somebody has stayed somewhere to decide to enforce. So I haven't seen a good model yet, but I'm, I'm actually looking into some of that.
Well, make your course for a lot of these buyers is that there's no regulations. They love that. They are coming from New York City where it's banned, you know, and they're seeing just all these dollar signs, you know, and
It's good to, to hear that. No, it's not good to hear it, but it's good to hear it from the Realtor about what's happening.
That's, yep, yep.
Yeah, that is interesting, because, I mean, I thought every, people are buying houses, people from out of state are buying houses to live in themselves. And so some of that, but not necessarily all.
Yeah.
Flipping it, basically, I guess it's like an Airbnb or short-term rental sometime.
Yeah. Scars, people are now going to Airbnb for month-long, three-month-long stays, paying three grand a month. It's the only option. So yeah, there's, you can make literally, you know, three or four or five times as much with a short-term rental than you could with a long-term.
Maybe to try to circle it back a bit, right to the grant opportunity. Yeah, another thought that I had was that, not necessarily what we should apply to, but it kind of struck me with the, the two municipal planning grants that we've done while I've been on the planning commission, the, the downtown design plan and the housing study. It strikes me that the housing study already, you know, has a lot more interest and buy-in from the community than the downtown one does. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but it seems like it's something that the community was already cared a lot about, was talking about, and it seemed like a pressing need, whereas, you know, every, everything can always be improved. The downtown needs improvements and stuff, but that didn't, like, I've, I've read some stuff, people are like, yeah, we've got this housing study ready and we can't wait to see what the recommendations are. So if, if some topic could be found like that, you know, some planning-related one for this next grant, then, you know, right, because we can do all these plans we want, but our aim is to implement them, right, and to get people to be persuaded and, and for the things to be actionable and people to be on a, you know, antsy at the idea of seeing the final product, so, but I couldn't think of another topic would be.
I wanted to advocate that that we applied for, that we use the grant, we apply for a grant to support a bike ped master plan. And unfortunately, you know, it's not one of the priorities. And I don't know whether, whether that means that, you know, we don't have much of a chance of getting funded, but if I could speak to that.
Yeah, and can I just jump in quick and say that if I'm correct, and if there's 120 possible points, that only 10 of them is at play for a priority project or not?
Yeah.
So it doesn't sound like it matters too much.
Good point. It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't lock you out of the water. Yeah, so I, I mean, Brattleboro's got some really, I think, pretty serious pedestrian problems, and it's also very, it's a very uncomfortable and sometimes unsafe place to bike. And I personally think that the only way that we're really going to make progress with this is if we can get a master plan where we prioritize with a lot of public input, what are the biggest concerns, and then figure out how do we get funding? This stuff's expensive. And how are we gonna, you know, you've got to line up grants. We perhaps need more of the municipal budget to be focused on, on infrastructure. That's a, that's a larger question, much beyond the planning commission. But I feel really strongly that that a master plan is, is needed and and again, you know, it's, no, it's not, it, it doesn't probably match in concern with that. Housing is an actual crisis that we're in right now, so it doesn't match that. And, you know, economic recovery from COVID-19 is very, very compelling, but it just feels like if we don't start, if we don't, if we don't take a step towards getting this master plan, we're just never going to really improve things. Our sidewalks are in very bad shape. There's small projects that are done to make improvements on existing sidewalks. There's a lot of areas that really should have had sidewalks initially, didn't, or the sidewalks are taken out in some cases. So there's just, there, there's a lot of issues that, and because it's such a long-term investment, I, I hope that, you know, I'd like to see us go ahead and try to apply for that rather than just kicking the can down the road and trying to do a little bit here and a little bit there.
Tom, could I expound on that?
Yeah, sure.
I, I also have to agree with you on that, Bruce, because I've been traveling quite a bit going up dirty enough to Townsend. And I've noticed more people, I don't know if it's because of the Olympics or whatever, but there's a lot, there's people jogging along that, I don't know if that's the bike lane or the breakdown lane, there's more bikers in going up West B as well too. So you're seeing a lot more traffic, but like you said, safety is one issue. And that's another thing that needs to be incorporated with more biking things. Sometimes I get confused when I go down Putney Road, which is the green and which one is the bike lane and
Bike in the green.
Yeah, well, when I hit, when I make that turn to go into Family Dollar or something, I said, like, well, this lane or this lane to bike? But it's just that, having that coordination and that, I guess that type of circle, because I'm pretty sure you probably will get a lot of feedback. And people are getting that to more biking and jogging. Like I said, I was shocked of going up Route 30 and people are jogging along there and biking, so I'm swerving or going into Vernon. And, you know, I just think safety in that too should be an important thing, and if we are going to put together some type of survey with that. And how would they incorporate that with the roads currently the way they are? You know, because some roads are this thin, and then if you add a bike lane, then kind of now, so I don't know if they go out there and they're going to, they check to see if there's something that
It's, it's pricey, like prudence.
Yeah.
I would say that's more of a scoping level study than, than what a master plan would be when you're dealing with like the specific road segment.
Yeah, can someone, can you quickly define like a master plan for everyone?
Um.
Or prudence, what you had in mind in that sense? Does that just mean town-wide?
So it's kind of looking at the existing conditions. And then kind of what are the desired conditions and kind of prioritizing, you know, what areas need what improvements? Did I, do you want to add on that or Steve, if you?
Yes, you know, I, I mean, I think well, I could, Danny, I guess I would add is the organization, the group that I'm in, BCAT. One of the priorities for BCAT is to have, you know, there's basically three main thoroughfare fairs through town and to have, you know, bike lanes on all, all of those. So, you know, Route 5, Route 9 and and I guess probably 142.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's one priority BCAT would like to see, but there, you know, that's just bike and there's a lot involved with that.
Well, there's several on that too. I don't know if traffic safety, that committee, if they do a survey to see something, okay. This is something independent, we would have to ask, I guess, somebody to go out and, I'm not saying sit in a chair to see how many order.
It's not even, a master plan won't necessarily even do the traffic counting or the bike ped counting. It'll take the information that's out there and maybe there'll be some that's needed to be done. It might look at sidewalk condition, it might have a ranking of sidewalk condition. I know the town has had that in the past that public work staff has done, but it might, you know, I don't, I don't know how the sidewalk condition is ranked, but you know, that'd probably be part of it so that you can identify, you know, the condition in which needs upgrade and but also where are the missing links? What are the easy things that you can do to improve the connectivity?
I mean, a lot of building the new roads and highways and infrastructures, I'm assuming they're considering incorporating a bike lane as they're building?
It depends.
Yeah. So I don't know how we can
For example, Route 9 from, what is it? It's west of it's west of West Brattleboro Village. I can't remember which road. Edward Heights, west of Edward Heights. That's going to be resurfaced between, and probably next summer, they're going to be putting bike lanes in. This is the state, it's state road. But based on, you know, conversations and advocacy from the town, they're putting bike lanes from there up to Sunset Lake Road. So as projects are done, I mean, that's the benefit of a master plan too. As projects are done, they can look at the master plan and say, oh yeah, there was this missing link. Now we need to incorporate that into the plan.
And he'll have more influence on the state projects?
Yeah, I could, it would, I think it would.
I see Dan's hand up. Yeah, please raise your hand too, Kate, or just speak quickly, because you guys are so small on the screen, but I do see your hand, Dan, I caught it this time.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to, if we can consider another alternative for the municipal grant? Is that, can we add another to the list?
Yeah, I think we're considering all that, that people are, have ideas about, yeah.
Sure, well, we've had a, just brief discussions about the 10-year anniversary since Tropical Storm Irene, and I just wanted to throw this in there that, by the way, it is $22,000, right?
Yes.
With, with 10, 10, so 32-ish, I mean
20, another 2,200 that we would match.
Oh, 10%, I'm sorry, okay. I, I didn't hear that correctly, okay. So so it, it's not a huge budget, but it does sound doable for a, I guess for lack of a better term, I, I would really like to see whether it results in a report or even you know, something similar to the downtown study that was presented in a website. I forget the, I'm sorry, I don't remember the terminology. Sorry?
Story.
Story map, yeah, thank you. Story map, yeah. That would reflect the lessons learned from Tropical Storm Irene, because, I mean, we just, was it two weekends ago? Or we had that flash flooding and some pretty serious damage done. And I, I just, you know, talking with a few people at the DPW, actually myself, and, and just, you know, people in the neighborhood, you know, neighborhoods where there are mixed-use roads, just to get to partly an overlap with all traffic safety. You know, it, it really seems to me that without documenting whatever those lessons learned have been, then, you know, we may have memories of it, but that's going to be lost as people are, move on, you know, and I think it would be great to document it. It might be a good way to spend, how, how long is, is a one-year project? Is that right?
Yeah, it's Yeah, it's um, is, let's see. Um, no, it's about a year and a half.
Okay, so to spend that year, which is, let's say, the ten-year anniversary year, where we might even reflect on, okay, what was learned that first year after the flooding? And in the Brattleboro area, or maybe just in Brattleboro, uh, be, I mean, I, I don't think you can really separate Brattleboro so much, because the water came from outside of Brattleboro in many cases, so of course, but um, but to get a sense of the different corridors that were affected, and what, uh, what changes have actually structurally been made? And uh, that kind of stuff. I, I, I don't wanna harp on it too much, but we're kind of losing an opportunity in a way if we don't do it soon, if we don't do, if we don't sort of assess what the lessons learned have been um, soon, and ten years seems like a convenient time.
I wanted to add something, this is bad timing, but um, I think the lessons learned is really important, because we're probably, I mean, we might experience that again sooner than we think, you know?
I, I think we just did, I mean, we did in some regards, just a couple of weekends ago.
And, and it's not even.
And that was a small one.
And that was a small one, it, maybe that can help us prepare better.
For sure, yeah, and it gets into hazards. Sorry, go ahead.
This past, this past weekend was uh, the damage in like the northern part of the county was, you know, uh, the worst since Tropical Storm Irene. So I know Brattleboro wasn't hit hard uh, last Thursday, but Putney, Westminster, Rockingham, um, other communities were. The only other thing I wanted to say about that, I mean, I think it's, it's a really interesting idea. I don't know how competitive it would be, I don't know how well it would score. Um, I just wanna throw that out there.
Because it doesn't hit other categories.
Because it doesn't hit the other categories, and um, you know, we don't wanna forget the lessons of Tropical Storm Irene, um, and I think it sounds like a really great, great project, and you know, getting it into a story map, something really visual. But maybe that's something to look for other sources of funding to do.
Sure, what, what are the, I'm just, uh, I'm not looking at the criteria, what, what are the categories it wouldn't hit, you think?
Um, well, so the priorities for this year are um, COVID nineteen, economic recovery plans and/or investment, fair and affordable housing plans and/or regulations that implement the zoning guide for Vermont neighborhoods, plans for a new designated area or a specific area of visual, physical master planning for a designated area, and the designated areas, the state has four categories, it's downtowns, village centers, new town centers, and neighborhood development areas. Um, and then innovative statewide model projects. Now, I think an argument could be made, it falls under there. Uh, you know, it's not something that's tied to the town plan, so there's, there's probably other criteria that don't have in front of me right now that it, it may not be so high as, I mean, I just think compared to the others, it might fall a little bit lo- lower.
Yeah, fair enough, yeah.
But.
I had a couple thoughts before the meeting, and um, because I knew Prudence was, she's mentioned that bike pad master plan before, and I mean, we talked about, you know, planning and, you know, things we can uh, count on happening at this point is um, you know, climate change, global warming, what have you, and so to speak to um, Dan's point, that would be my, maybe, uh, you know, non-expert, but preferred sort of modifier to, to your proposal, is to be some sort of like, you know, inevitable global warming adaptation plan for Brattleboro. And that would, that would hit, I think, everything you're talking about, too, just in a different sort of way. And then, and then the thought that I had for Prudence's um, idea of a bike master plan, is I would love it if public transit could be added to that, too. So I don't know if it would be rephrased as an anti-car master plan, because that's what those things have in common, but um, and so I don't know, you know, if that would be stepping on the other group's toes or something, you know, whoever controls this, the streets and the public transit and everything, or if they're already doing everything they can in that regard, or if it'd be good if we approach it from that way, but then what are we gonna do? Just like recommend mover, change things, I don't know. Maybe we can have better bus stops around town, but I know there's, you know, there's roads that don't even have it, and I've been to other countries where public transit is amazing. And it's so lackluster here, and so I think it would, it would gel nicely with bike and pad as well.
I think it could be included to a certain extent. I mean, the funding for public transit in Vermont, in rural areas, um, you know, we're not gonna be able to dive into that, we wouldn't be able to get into that with a with a, this type of master plan, we just wouldn't have enough money. Um, but, but perhaps of interest to you is um, Southeast Vermont Transit, which runs the mover, is actually going to be piloting a or they're, they're studying micro-transit, which is basically instead of these fixed routes, it's kind of like Uber of bus service. Um, so they're gonna get working on that. Um, it's been piloted in Montpelier. Um, so that would bring a different model of public transit, more on-demand public transit. Um, so.
And most, maybe you could incorporate bike rest stops too along the highway. I mean, this is places that you know, like we have the bike stands that are down here for people, like people traveling along, like I said, I see a consulate thirty uh, West B, Putney Road, and they travel long distances, and I'm like, where they comes, women was literally jogging. And I'm like, there's no house in the immediate area. So, the, and the safety of that, too, we have to figure out a way also with the safety part uh, along those highways, because I mean, Putney Road is one good example, but we need to make it universal. I mean, in all areas for people to get out, and like you said, accessibility to sidewalks and all, and streets uh, for people with handicaps, too, that might wanna go out, so.
Um, I think, you know, I think transportation is active transportation, because you walk, you know, you walk to bus stops, or, you know, perhaps you bike, so I, I think it's related, and it seems like it, you know, that, that could be considered in the plan for sure. And then I should have mentioned handicapping. I think that that's really important in terms of uh, folks in wheelchairs and uh,
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that would be important to include.
Out there with their carriages and things, struggling, they go jogging with the guys, it's amazing, it's this why I'm saying I get to kick it, I gotta get back.
Yeah, it's too easy, just to.
I guess, start a drive.
Let's see what Dan has to say.
Well, as, as, after uh, Sue read off some of the criteria, one, a- and as you've been talking, one idea kind of comes to mind, which is kind of a fusion of these two things, and hear me out, because it's really a zygote of an idea here. But uh, emergency service providers have varying modes of transportation. One of them, for example, police officers can use mountain bikes, right? Uh, and one of the major concerns with roads washing out during uh, you know, a flood event, or, or you know, people not being able to reach, be reached in their houses, is transportation for emergency service providers. I don't, for lack of a better term, you know, ambulance, you know, EMTs, police, fire. Um, and I'm just curious, I mean, has there been any um, has there been a comprehensive look at, you know, sort of how hazards overlap with the transportation system and how uh, service providers need to get to, in some cases, remote parts of the town, uh, or more inaccessible parts of the town, and what the difficulties with those are? I'm, I'm speaking from, you know, experience of seeing dirt roads in, in Brattleboro washed away, you know, just recently, and I don't know what they, I honestly don't uh, you know, know what they would look like during a serious storm event, and, you know, uh, also, by the way, transportation to the hospital, of course, can be accomplished by helicopter, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what the, the fusion here would be, but it would, I think it would point to reinforced, you know, access for bikes in some cases, as well as reinforced access, you know, uh, for planning for transportation routes for emergency providers. I, I, I'm just, that's kind of my zygote of an idea, sorry, it's not very well-developed.
Yeah, very. I, I, I have to concur with that, too. I went up to Scott's Farm yesterday. And with the rose, because we all know what, whether it just arose and the whole ground was just, and they had cones up, and I was like, a while back, didn't they have bike police in Brattleboro one time, Sue?
Uh, I know Keen had bike police.
That they were riding bikes in Brattleboro one time. Yeah, and I'm like, what happened with that?
What happened, yeah.
And that's the thing, too, how do you get accessible? And I, and there's a lot of dirt roads. Even hard, because, I mean, I went a little further up, I had to turn back, because the roads were already just, I mean, the dirt just washed away, eroded, so I had to turn my car and come back down.
And then think about a, a, like a rear-wheel-drive ambulance trying to make that road is impossible, you know, for example.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have like a, what are those, doing buggies, what do you call those, uh, when they go mudding?
ATV's or?
ATV's or something like that, and that's something to consider, even in the winter, and those, in those conditions, too, because uh, a lot of the back roads are not accessible with, as we know, a lot of the vehicles that they have, the new ones, too. So that's something to incorporate as well, too, uh, with emergency access.
Yeah, what do you think, Sue, of these?
Can I?
Oh, by the, by the way, before, before you mention, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the COVID connection here, of course, which is, you know, emergency service providers and uh, you know, the, all the EMTs who, you know, selflessly responded to people who potentially had COVID, just wanna throw that in there. There's a COVID connection.
So what I wanted to say is, um, soon after Irene, you know, within the, the couple of years after Irene, Vtrans did a big thing, they were working with stream geomorphologists and were kind of evaluating the main routes. Um, I don't think they went and dealt with our rural roads, um, but they were kind of evaluating that, and what were the hazards, and kind of I, I think, you know, putting together plans for how could they get around if a section of nine um, washed out, and kind of identifying, um, for example, bridges that maybe were off skew or something that could create a flood hazard, or um, a fluvial erosion hazard. Um, but in terms of our local roads, um, you know, I need to check in with uh, the fire chief, who is the emergency management director, but I think they do have a good sense of, um, particularly after Irene, about, you know, um, alternative routes, alternative means, um, you know, they definitely uh, were responding in different ways during Irene, people who needed oxygen and medication and were cut off. Um, so I think some of that has been done.
Sure, yeah, I'm sure it has. Yeah, I, I, just as a, as a mental note, or from, from uh, uh, from what Prudence was saying about a master plan, I mean, uh, there's two, at least two levels of uh, need, uh, you know, there's, there are skilled riders, and then there are recreational and, you know, occasional, uh, maybe possibly even unsafe and unprepared bicyclists, uh, and uh, you know, it's not always true in, in all cases, that you know, it's possible to make the roads safe for everyone, but if you have trained police officers, for example, on bikes, who are, you know, trained to do all kinds of things on, on mountain bikes, um, then you can at least, kind of, they can be good judges of, you know, uh, honestly, of policing other people on bikes. That's kind of, I mean, that becomes part of the problem, if you create an infrastructure for, for cyclists, like on Route thirty or, or wherever, then, okay, what if someone is going the wrong way on the bike lane? Right, or, you know, who polices that, you know, uh, and uh, anyway, it, it, it becomes, it's nice to, it would be nice to actually follow up on that question about the uh, police on bikes for that reason.
I have to agree with him, because I was going down Putney Road, and instead of going in the opposite direction, so I guess there should be some enforcement to obey rules of the road, it's just like drivers, but that's another.
Yes.
I, I would be happy to follow up, I would point out a couple of things, um. First of all, we have a new police chief, so um, you should reach out and um, share your ideas with her. Um, and second of all, we're really short on police officers right now, so it might take some time before we see.
Maybe we could deputize some people.
I didn't say that.
Well, yeah, I mean, just, just, you know, good thought, you know, just let a person don't be, you know, professional, pro-social, you're going the wrong direction without getting in confrontation, but you know, these are the things that we have to, you look at, you know, when, when, it's just like skateboarding or anything else, uh, when we're out there driving, I mean, uh, but for now, we have to just basically try to see what other safety issues that are prioritizing right now with the roads that are being built, to make sure that they incorporate those safety. Because someone mentioned barriers, I don't know if that's ex- it's like bike barriers, so was it the, the, the steel things, when people go down the road, they're like, they have it in France, I think, or Italy?
Protected bike lane.
Yeah.
But.
I think Keen had one, too. I don't know if that was, that's one, but they had those little barriers, so people don't bear off, or they don't bear into, or you know, respect the rules of the road, as they say, so.
I think we should zoom out a little bit. To the theme of the uh, the planning grant that we're gonna apply for, assuming we want to. Um, so then I'll just barge in and ask my question of Sue. Raise my hand, Tom. What, what is meant by innovative statewide model project?
That's a good question.
Okay.
All right.
Whatever we, I mean, you know, maybe the Irene thing would be an innovative statewide project, um. I think they leave it open to, um, let's see. I mean, examples that they gave is a placemaking, community arts plan project, integrating local heritage preservation, a dynamic pot process and regional toolkit to enhance the efficiency and quality of municipal plans. Not sure what that means. An equity action plan to correct disparate outcomes, the segregating effects of prior planning decisions, and environmental justice-oriented planning for new multifamily, a team-based student competition and award for best municipal plan proposals using a user-friendly workbook. Um, so.
Innovative.
Innovative, um.
So does staff have any, and not that, just to try to put everything on the table here, of ideas that we're considering, this, this, you know, has staff considered, and then, you know, what, what might be most needed, or most likely to have good effects, or?
You know, we've talked about in the housing realm, um, the be, people, having people be able to visualize things, and so you know, this kind of having designs on hand, um, that people can plug and play, or even if, you know, you wanna build a four-pack, um, or a triplex, or something like that, um, so you know what they could look like. So I think we're we've talked about that, um, but the bike pad master plan has also been discussed for some time, and BCAT in particular has been looking for some assistance. So I think those two would be.
Yeah.
You know.
What do you think about the um, the like global warming adaptation idea? Is it just a good, a good one-liner, but it's without actually knowing how it would fill out? Or does it seem like a lot of good come from that one thing, or?
I am worried that an adaptation plan would cost a lot more than twenty-two thousand. That, that's my concern, but I would need to think about that a bit more and speak with Stephen or Sustainability Coordinator to get some guidance on that. I mean, I think that any of these projects could actually, you know, the three that we're talking about could have some difficulties coming in at
Right.
under twenty-five thousand.
Well, the downtown design plan, we uh, matched the amount, correct?
We did.
I don't know.
Yeah, that was kind of a different situation, though, so we put it into our budget.
Okay.
Um, the issue here will be that these will be awarded in December, and so it's not in the current fiscal year that we're talking about, so really, all I could make was in that, was a. So really, all I could make was a match, was a ten, ten percent match. No, I could probably make a twenty percent match and do ten from this fiscal year and ten from next fiscal year. But still, that's not getting us. To what I think an adaptation plan could be.
I see Dan's hand.
Yeah, I, you know, now that you mentioned, uh, the new police chief, I, I wonder. Is there an opportunity here to reach out to the police department and see how or if there's a. Purpose for a project that they and the planning commission, planning commission and planning department would be interested in? Just like given a, you know, given the idea that, okay, we've got a year and a half to do something with twenty-five-ish thousand dollars, you know. On a planning level and, and, you know, it does strike me whenever we, whenever people bring up the. Uh, lack of, what is it? Is it seventeen versus twenty-seven? Are those the numbers, a number of police officers? I mean, that's a huge percentage difference, obviously, and what, what is the effect of that? You know, I mean. We kind of have our subjective idea, but I'm just curious how much they could, uh, do. To prove the. Efficacy of being, you know, of their shorthanded staff. I don't know what, but you know, if there would be some way they could. Participate in a project.
Are you suggesting a project to kind of?
Well, to ask them, I mean, I, I'm not really suggesting any particular project, but just there, there seems to be a planning aspect. Related to the infrastructure of the town, but obviously the police deal with every day, and I'd be curious to see if they. Uh, you know. It certainly would check a lot of the boxes. I mean, COVID, you know. In a innovative, possibly a model, I, I don't know. It would require asking them or, you know, but, but, you know.
I, I mean, I can definitely ask them. I'm not sure.
It, it, it has to be based in what our planning. You know, her view is, right? You know, like. Land development, urban revitalization, and yeah, so some of those things do, and you know, transportation.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm just, I just, you know, thought I'd ask, um, if it, um, sounded like it was worth pursuing, um.
I don't know if that's something they've already had or was in the making or an avenue. Chief is going to read, direct or re-correct that and diversify. I, I, that's a good question.
For me, I feel like there is a lot going on with the police department and the community safety review and. Um, they're not conversations that. Planning is a part of, and so. I feel like maybe a sit back and wait approach, um, is probably. Preferable. I mean, if, if we wanted to partner with them on some sort of. I'm having a hard time. I, I think they've got a lot on their plates and they are looking at a lot of different things. Um, and how they do their jobs. I'm not seeing a clear planning nexus at this point, but I could, I could have a conversation with the police chief.
Well, might be a good excuse. I don't, I don't know. I really was putting it as a question. It's, uh, just, uh. Possibly an opportunity to have a conversation about it.
I think maybe this. At that meeting, you know, talk on the side, never, just want to put a bug in your like little sticky note. You know, bucket list at some point, you can just meet with the planning commissioner. We have this going, you know. Down the road will be good, but I think once she gets in there, it's a lot going to be going on. We're surely going to meet with CPCC and it's a lot going to be happening. So, yeah, uh. I, I hear what you're saying. That's something that's going to probably have this. This, uh, put a pin for now, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I don't personally see the, um, a real like planning connection. I see, I see some relation. Everything's related, but yeah. For me, I'd have to have it see, you know, see some options fleshed out more. To understand better, um. Yeah, from my perspective, you know, housing, you know, should, should maybe be off the table for this one because of the next opportunity coming up. You know, next fiscal year, specifically for implementing. So like I said, I'm not going to be advocating for housing personally and, um. I didn't really know what to do with the global warming adaptation idea. It was just three words I put together that seems, you know, good because it's going to happen. Global warming and it is, but I don't really know what, what a plan would look like exactly, um. And then the COVID economic recovery, that's a priority there, but like. I don't know, you know, that's, we, we don't focus. We haven't focused much on economy, you know, we could maybe, right? But. Yeah, but I don't know. We haven't so far in the planning and I don't know, doesn't seem like our. Our specialty lately and. So I don't know. I mean, do we want to decide this evening? These grants come up every year, you know, or you push it off to another month and share more.
I think.
Documents with each other and. Try to, yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was going to say, I mean. If you want, we can go back and be prepared for the September, since we have more time. You know, we could have more information prepared about what, um. You know, what a global warming adaptation plan maybe could be and what we could do for twenty-five thousand, same with the bike pet master plan. And same with the housing infill. I'm, I know you said housing's off the table for you, but if we wanted to. At least show, um, you know, what it could look like for everybody and then you could make a decision.
Remendable or that we, we could add to or some track or.
Well, that's the state. I don't know. I mean, yeah, but maybe, maybe no one else is really into the, I don't know, like, should we do a informal vote? Thumbs up, thumbs down about those three ideas or, or, or there are other ideas?
Might be more, I'm thinking more additionally afterwards, September, you said, basically to. Decide, might be some more conjuring.
I, I, can I ask a question, Tom? Uh, I don't know actually what the focus would be within housing. For this project, did, was that already outlined? I. Was there like a fo- focal point within housing that this was going to tackle?
Yeah, well, 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 one of the priorities that the state has, and once again, it seems like priorities are just, you know, ten or fifteen points out of the hundred twenty. So maybe we'd still, you know, could win a grant without it, but, um. You know, in addition to the, the COVID nineteen economic recovery that I mentioned, that was one of them, but is the, um, you know. Uh, one of the priorities was implementing the. The zoning for great neighborhoods. Um, recommendations. So, but it sounds like since next year, there's going to be a whole pile of money that we probably will have access to with our great grant applicants here on staff. Um, we can just do that then, and in the meantime, get something else done with this opportunity. Maybe housing related, I don't know. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that, 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 I remember the housing. Yeah, thank you.
I have a quick question about what, oh, sorry, am I?
Have a pancake though, because it's hard for her to.
Sorry, um, I just had a question about, you know, what might, you know, when. Does the state consider plans or, or projects that could maybe easily be rep? Be replicated and use, okay, baby, I'll be right there. Um, sorry, yeah, something that could be like. Used, like, I'm just thinking about the global warming, you know, that could maybe be something that could maybe be replicated by other towns. Is that something that they consider when they're looking at these?
I believe that is, they are looking at that, um. I think part of that falls under what's innovative and what can be replicated, but I think I'm trying to remember the actual questions in the grant application. And I feel like that's something that is addressed to.
I think that idea of, um, like looking into three that we spent the most time talking about and, and. You know, how, what, what, how twenty-two thousand or twenty-five thousand, um, how far that would go, what that could get us. I think that would be helpful in making a decision, and now that we have more time, but. You know, that's good. We don't have to decide tonight, but we probably should decide at the September meeting because there have to be discussions with. If we're going to use outside help, um, to get, and then to make a budget and so on, and also you have to write the application.
And it has to be approved by the select board.
Oh, okay, so.
Whatever you prefer, no, if, if we talk about it in September, there's four meetings to get it. More than four to get it before this.
Okay, um. Does anyone feel strongly about those three, like, not being considered? Just because they, just because one person mentioned them, doesn't mean that we're all.
I, I would consider it and then put to vote to wait this, at least September, if anything else could. Would come up with any other thoughts, ideas. I think you might want to add to it, like, you know, expound on it more, like, almost more ideas apart with that, you know. Between, they say, wow, I wish I could have hit that too. I mean, I, I get like that, it might be additional stuff that we might want to put through as well.
So that was really strong and carried today, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
We wouldn't necessarily have the information Sue was going to get on the other ones, but.
Right, can we brainstorm more things?
Could I, could I add to the brainstorm a little? Well, uh, I, I, uh, appreciate, you know, all the, the criteria for the project. But it, I think, um, to get to Prudence, Prudence's project, um, I think having a. Something more specific maybe, and I, I don't mean that having a master plan is too general. It's obviously a need, but. I almost feel like the master planning. Concept should be something that the planning commission or the planning department does. You know, regardless of funding, regardless of extra projects, I'm just saying, you know, it's kind of everyday stuff. And if we could hone that down to a point, I, I just want to bring up one aspect of it, which is, um, electric assist bicycles specifically. And, um, and the, the higher speeds that people are riding at. And possibly not being skilled at doing so, and I, I just want to raise that because it's a, it overlaps with a lot of public safety issues and. And, um, but also transportation, of course, I, I mean, uh, you know, there are a lot of directions to go in, and I understand the need for a master plan, but. But for a relatively small project, it seems like if we could study or come out with a, an understanding. Of, of something to do with the changes that are going on right now, especially with e-bikes. That would be really valuable. I don't know how Prudence feels about that modification or that, you know, honing it down. I, I don't, I just don't know honestly if, getting to your point about twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't, a, a real, a, a well-developed master plan might. You know, require a little more than that.
You know, Dan, I think e-bikes are. Are just adding to the number of people that are cycling, you know, there's more bikes being ridden now because. They flatten the hills and so on, and, and they're also a form of transportation, um. And, you know, cargo bikes can be used, um, you know, almost car replacement, um, if you're willing to throw up. Um, so I think that, 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 that the, um, e-bike. Um, piece of it just adds to the need for improved. Infrastructure.
For sure. Sorry, go ahead. I agree. No, absolutely. I, I guess just honing it down to, okay, what are we trying to get at other than? Of course, improved bike infrastructure, you know, that's the big picture, but are we getting a better sense of? How much certain routes are used by different users, that, that kind of thing. We can talk about it further at some point, but. Just, just thought I would say it might be better to, you know, to have a biking and pedestrian focus, but, I mean, often. For example, with e-bikes, they go very fast, and I know that some motor, motorists, uh, uh. Uh, car drivers are, uh, you know, not as prepared to respond to fast moving bicycles sometimes. And that's been, that's led to some accidents and, you know, it's that kind of understanding that might be valuable.
I just quickly say, I don't know if I'm missing the mark, um, in a, in, in commenting, Dan, but, um. When we pick a subject here for a grant, then we'll develop an RFP. And then we'll, what I've seen the last two or three, as I've been a planning commissioner, is then we spell out like three or four or five. Specific, actually, like tangible things we want the consultant to focus on. And, uh, you know, and structure their product around. So that could be a way to make it more specific, but maybe what you're saying is also just get away from the master plan idea and make it. Entirely something much more specific.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that's, I, I understand, again, I understand the need for a master plan, but, you know, um. I think I would be on board, I mean, a- actually with any of these, but whatever it is that it should be. I think we could even narrow it down further into three or four subcategories, but the, the basic topic should also be pretty specific. That's kind of, yeah.
I know, Sue, maybe you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I mean. I hear what you're saying, Dan, um, and I like thinking about the future and how technology is changing. My concern about being specific to e-bikes is you're not really accessible to everybody. Um, so I think if we're doing a plan, we want something that's going to address kind of all the socioeconomic levels. Um, you know, maybe still, still planning for increased e-bike usage, but I wouldn't want to leave out. Um, you know, something basic as where's crosswalk and is it meeting the needs of the people who. Are walking for transportation purposes or recreational, but.
So I guess with that, we use it, our fee basically, that's like.
Yes, so, so we'll pick a subject, and I believe, and then, um, and then staff will draft an RFP and then they'll send it, you know, request for proposals. And they'll share it with all of us at a meeting or maybe in advance of the meeting, and then we'll say like, oh, good job on the RFP, but maybe can you add this or that? I think that's important, or, and then either we all just, someone feels adamant about it or we vote on it and then. And then we all approve of a final RFP to send out to the world.
Considered to just disabled bike, the people with those scooters too. You know, that's something I would, that's the biggest thing is with people with disabilities who are not being. And they'll have that accessibility, so many people don't want to get out. And exercise that it just is, but they don't have that accessibility.
Yeah, so, so staff will take a good stab at the, uh.
Right, so that being said.
Oh, sorry, yeah, oh, I don't, okay, yeah, I, I've never actually seen, yeah, the application for these, for these grants, so I was mixing the two up, yeah. That's much down the line.
I mean, do, do we still want to vote whether yay or nay, but?
I mean, we could push things off and have staff and, you know, maybe Prudence wants to find a bike headmaster plan to persuade us or staff will do it or both. Or we could just be efficient and someone can make a motion on one of them now. And we could just get it over with. Whatever, it seemed like people were agreeing to, you know, push it off and get more information, but there's always the risk of putting, you know. More information and waiting and putting more stuff on staff that then we just get less done in the future.
Right, but I hate to look back and say, well, I wish they could have added that.
There's plenty of time.
There's plenty of time, yeah, they'll be in the RFP.
I just want to make sure. So you're saying basically if we say yay now, we can still.
Just to, to, just to some general topic, right? Just a general topic? Doesn't, the application doesn't require much specificity?
Oh, no, the application does.
Oh, and then where do you come up with that specificity from? Just what you hear of our intent.
To be articulate.
Yeah. And what we just, what a normal project, you know, like if it's a bike headmaster plan, there's, you know. Kind of.
Yeah.
There's plenty of time for the grant, so you'd see it, but if you decided to go with a bike, like headmaster plan, there is kind of a typical way you go about it unless we're going to. Do something different.
Okay, yeah, the other two ones or the global warming adaptation thing that maybe doesn't have typical things, okay? Take much of an action, yeah.
If, if we are, I, I just want to make another plug for, uh, I, I agree, uh, the context would be global warming. Uh, climate change, et cetera, um, for looking at the changing landscape due to. Increased precipitation or, you know. What have you, it, it, it's pretty wide ranging, um, but, um. But yeah, the, I would still come back to, um, you know, thinking about extreme weather events in general, maybe, you know. but yeah, the, I would still come back to, um, you know, thinking about extreme weather events in general, maybe, you know, within that context, you know, just kinda to, uh, and the effect, uh, the effect on things like, I mean, for example, economic impact would be, you know, maple sugaring. Uh, you know, there, the, you know, there, there is an impact for sure, if you wanted to broaden it to climate change. Um, so there's, I mean, there's all kinds of ways they could go with that, I, I, so I would agree with the, I think that would be a real winner.
Yeah, so how about then for next meeting? What do you all think about this? Uh, each of us finds examples, you know, that, that, to the extent we, uh, we care to about those three ideas. Um, you know, the third one being, uh, some sort of housing, but that isn't by law implementation. By law, uh, yeah. And staff will look into those three as well. And so we'll have backgrounds, you know, supporting docs for the next meeting from staff, and, you know, like, Prudence might find a bike headmaster plan or something, and, you know, maybe I or Dan or whoever, you know, will find a, uh, you know, um, extreme climate, uh, change adaptation plan or something, and then we'll have a little 20 or 30 minute thing next meeting and decide. That sound good?
Sounds good to me. What do you think, Prue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, great.
Yeah, one more person, maybe it'll be.
Yeah, it's Kate.
Kate, Kate.
Thumbs up, Kate. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's move on to the, um, to some updates from our subcommittees. First off with the, the housing study.
So, um, the housing study is moving along. If you haven't taken the housing survey, um, I'll be resending you the link tomorrow. Please take it, share it with your, your friends, family, colleagues, strangers. Um, we've had over 700 responses. We'll probably have it open for another couple of weeks. We've distributed over 300 hard copies to, um, the, uh, brother, our housing partnerships, they were gonna give one to each of their, um, residents, uh, lots of, about 100 copies to Tri Park and 30 to Youth Services, so we're, we're trying to get it out there. Um, if anybody else need hard copies, we can make them and get them to you. Um, so that's, that's going well. Um, there seems to be early indication that there seems to be some interest in tiny houses and it's kind of smaller footprint. Homes, so that's, that's all consultants gave us. Um, they are working on finalizing the data analysis, at which point we'll, um, release that, release that. There's a lot of information in there and it's being reframed a little bit. And with some additional information added that was requested by the steering committee. Where we've done some interviews, um, some group interviews, and I'm working on scheduling a bunch of them, um, for a little bit later in August. That will include interviews with realtors, with developers, with the NAACP of Wyndham County. Uh, I'm sure there's more, but they're escaping me. Um, so that's kind of it. It's been the survey and kind of interviews, um, group interviews, um, that kind of thing. So that's where the project's at. We're still on schedule for, you know, a plan in the fall, um, that will be released. But so far it's, it's going well. They're doing a lot of work on the backend.
Well, Dan and I try to do a little outsourcing ourselves. What is it Habitat for Humanity, Dan? We need money.
Un- unsuccessfully, yeah, yeah. It's, it's expensive to start a, start a Habitat for Humanity chapter. Actually, could I, I, thank you, Sue, can I add a little bit?
Yes, you and Kate, please, please add.
We, we had a, we had a great, uh, steering committee meeting last time, looking at some of the data questions and so forth. I, uh, I, I know this might seem like a real hot topic issue, but I think it's so relevant to, um, the, uh, the current, uh, discussion and interest in the refugee resettlement program, uh, and the discussion is, I believe, gonna continue tomorrow at the select board meeting. Um, and, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, what we're doing is, I mean, getting, getting firm, uh, context and details about the, about the housing situation is, is gonna be so valuable uh, for all kinds of, um, applications. And Kate, yeah, you should add something to.
Oh, um, I don't have anything to add at the moment.
Oh, sorry, I didn't wanna put you on the spot. I thought you already had wasted your hand.
Uh, yeah, I do just wanna pick up on what Dan just said. Um, there's gonna be a presentation tomorrow night at the select board meeting at 6:15. You can be in person or you can be in Zoom, on Zoom, um, from BDCC and the Ethiopian, uh, Community Development Council on the refugee resettlement, um, program that's being proposed for the area. So, um, if you're interested, you should check it out. That's an aside.
Yeah, any questions or anything else on the housing study? Okay, I think Sue's gonna cover the third and fourth thing, so I'll, I'll give her a break since I'm on the solar sighting, uh, subcommittee. I think some people are new and relatively and weren't around during the formation of it, so let's see if I can summarize it a bit. Back in December, um, a solar developer came to a planning commission meeting um, to request preferred site designation for a property that they, uh, hoped and had plans to put a certain sort of, uh, solar panel energy generation development on, and it's, it's just for net metered solar, and it, so that means connected to the grid, and maybe means something else too, but anyway, under 500 kilowatts. And the way the preferred site thing means that, um, there's nine categories at the state level where eight of them automatically get preferred site status, and with that, they get incentives, like a few more cents per kilowatt hours, or they're able to build bigger, uh, you know, capacity, more solar panels than they would have otherwise. And all of those other eight are like disturbed sites, like rooftops, parking lots, brownfields, um, the, the other, the, um, of the nine is, uh, up to the municipalities basically to choose. So it leaves that local autonomy in deciding, um, that could be, you know, on, on farmer's land, it could be on private residential property, it could be, you know, and it's gonna be on the ground because rooftops are automatic, but, um, it leaves it up to the, to the locality, basically. And, um, at the planning commission meeting, it was our first time seeing that, and, um, we had some differences of opinion and a semi sort of split vote, so we decided that, um, we'll probably be seeing this again, where a solar developer comes to the town and asks to, to, for their site to be labeled as a preferred site. So we formed, um, a, a subcommittee to hopefully create, um, and I think the intent was to, to create kind of firm definitive, um, guidance and, uh, criteria for what sites would be eligible or on, you know, qualifying, which ones wouldn't. Um, so we had monthly meetings starting in like February or March, and, uh, the last, well, we skipped the last month or two because the two or three before that, or the two before that weren't really getting anywhere. There's kind of some differences of opinion that the doc had drafted. Um, you know, had some very specific criteria, like, uh, you know, is it under power lines, or is it on, you know, like, is prime ag soil, you know? Banish the, the, the developer, you know, the proposal for being a preferred site, or is it, uh, you know, eligible because it's a dual use with, um, farming? So, um, we, we, we put that draft on hold and, um, and staff worked, and we skipped a meeting or two, and staff worked on a, um, a different version, which, you know, and the aim of all this is to bring it to the planning commission, and hopefully we'll adopt it and use it to, to guide our, um, decision-making when there's future preferred site applications. And so the one that staff came up with, um, a bit more general, doesn't have a specific criteria as the first one, but, um, I've just shared, I'm the facilitator of that group, so I've just shared it with the, um, the other members who are Doran, who's on the planning committee, um, commissioned with us, and then two energy committee members, uh, and ag advisory committee person and, um, conservation commission person, uh, member, and, um, yeah, so it's shared, and we're gonna have a meeting at the, towards the end of August, which, um, in our formation, August is our deadline for producing something that we'll share with the planning commission, um, but we're in charge of that, so we don't necessarily have to hold, hold them to the fire, their feet to the fire, but, um, so hopefully at next meeting, um, the solar sighting group will um, be a lot closer to getting something to us. It seems like it will, from my vantage point, yeah, and it comes with like recommendations as well, which aren't necessarily having anything to do with preferred sighting, but as far as, um, encouraging solar developments in town through other ways that we could think of. So, that's it for that. Any questions? Onto the Route 9 bike scoping study.
All right, so this one, um, was delayed a little bit, uh, the contractor that, so to go back to the start, this is, um, looking at how we could accommodate bicycle lanes on both sides of High Street, um, basically from Main Street all the way up to exit, the exit to Interchange, so along High Street and Western Ave. Um, and so the consultant has kind of been looking at, you know, existing conditions, um, we had a couple of public meetings, one to talk about existing conditions, and then the other was to kind of get feedback at the alternatives that they were looking at, um, which included having a bicycle lane on both sides, but parking only on one side of the roadway. And then another alternative was to have the parking, um, drop parking on one side for a little bit and then drop it on the other side, so you, you still have two bike lanes, but you only have parking on one side, and that side is alternating throughout the corridor, um, which I think, um, if I recall, was kind of the preferred, um, after the second public meeting, that was kind of the direction that it was moving as the alternative that would be recommended. Um, with scoping studies, there is a very defined process, um, they are looking at right of way, they're looking at natural resources, they're looking at, um, historic and archaeological resource potential, and so it got a little hung up in the historic resource, um, and the level of review that the consultant, subconsultant did. Um, Vtrans changed their requirement about a year ago, and so they had to go back out and do some more work. Um, we're expecting, I'm expecting to see a copy of the plan, the draft plan in a week or two. Um, and then it'll go to the state, they have 30 days, once they have reviewed it, then we can take it to public meetings. So we're expecting to be done with that, um, by the end of September. Um, so definitely did not need the timeline of, we want it to be done the end of June, but it looks like it'll be the end of September. And so we'll see how that goes. Are there any questions with that?
No, just wait for the draft deck, we can see. Visual, I just was gonna next time about the solar side, I just wanna see if you have any.
Oh, I could share it with you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, we could, they catch up because I just jumped into this, so that way I could see, check notes.
Just a quick question. Go ahead, go ahead.
Prudence, then Dan.
So when, so the, um, it goes to the state, they have 30 days to comment, and then you expect it'll be ready for public comment?
Yes.
The end of September?
Yeah, uh, by the end of September. We hope to be done with the whole thing by the end of September, so state has 30 days, then we'll warn a public hearing and, or public meeting and take it to the public, and there could be some tweaks after that, but.
But finalized by the end of September. Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Dan?
Yeah, I understand you can't go into details, but could you give us a, a little more, uh, inkling into what the historical issues that the subcontractor went into too much depth on or something?
Uh, I'd have to look it up, but I think what they did was, um, a desktop review of the homes in the area to kind of figure out their eligibility. Uh, um, and they needed more than just the desktop review. I think they needed to, uh, be out looking at every individual home, something like that.
But it was the idea that the, that the bike lane would affect the historical nature of the residences, is that kind of the connection?
No, it, it, the, the reason that you're looking at historic and, um, it's just, it's just the process, and they're making an assumption that construction of the bike lanes could impact the homes. However, we don't have any intents to really work outside of the right of way. So it's kind of a moot point on this project, but it's federal funds and therefore has to kind of go through a certain
Oh, yeah.
level upfront.
Okay. Just wondered, thank you.
I mean, if, if we were looking at a new multi-use path, if we were looking at acquiring land or something like that,
Right.
this might be more relevant.
Right.
I'll just, uh, be humble here and, and probably admit my, uh, my failing memory. Yeah, no doubt you've probably already said that, the, the, about the implementation of this, when all is said and done, is it at the town level or the state or?
It's at this town level, however, this is a state portion of the road, which is why we had to do a scoping study. The state wasn't interested in entertaining.
Yeah.
Um, they, they wanted a certain level of, uh, study done on it, um, so, you know, they will need to sign off on it. Um, implementation will be at the town level because this is, I think, a town-maintained portion of the.
All, all through town budget.
Um, yeah, but there are, you know.
Grants and things.
There are things that we could apply for, yeah. Um, and, you know, it could be a matter of just line striping, um, in which case the town could move forward with doing, could budget it, do it.
Yeah.
Or it could be a bigger project where we go after a grant.
Is the, is the town committed? I mean, like, like gung ho?
I will have to, you know, the final presentation will probably be with the select board, but I think that there's support.
Mm-hmm.
From the, you know, the departments.
Okay.
So the state regs and specs are different from, or are there, they, you have to have certain things that they want before the, okay.
Yeah, well, this is federal funding that comes through the state, and so there's a pretty defined process.
Specs, as they say.
I think that there, you know, in terms of the whole study area, when we got the grant, we're like, well, if, if the state wants a scoping study, we may as well do it all the way down to Main Street. I think that, you know, there, I, I, I don't know how that will be perceived with losing parking the entire way, but, um, so I, I think it's, there's some decisions to be made there. But, you know, bike lanes are beneficial for everybody.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So that case might need to be made.
Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Okay, how about the hazard mitigation plan?
So the hazard mitigation plan, um, is actually gonna go before the select board tomorrow night for a public, uh, for their adoption of it, at, at which that's a project that started late fall, like maybe in November or to be December. We've had, um, a steering committee meet three times, we've had some targeted interviews with, um, different people. Um, we've had, we had a story map open where people could drop information about hazards. Um, we're at the point where, uh, it's ready to be reviewed by FEMA, so the select board, we're asking them to adopt it tomorrow. Then it would go to the state who performs the review on behalf of FEMA, um, and then if we're approved, um, you know, they could send back, there might be some minor changes that will be made, but once we have, uh, an adopted uh, hazard mitigation plan, which could happen tomorrow night, if there was a, um, federally declared disaster, we'd be eligible for, um, a greater reimbursement rate than if we don't have it. So, uh, with the storm a couple of weeks ago,
Yeah.
we didn't really wanna wait any longer. Um, so I'm happy to share a copy of that plan with anybody who's.
Oh, that'd be great. Let's take a look at that. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So if you tune in tomorrow night and you stay till the end, Brian and I will be presenting on that.
I'll try to stay up, I'll be coming up in person, so.
Yeah.
Sue, Sue, are you offering to, are you offering to email it to us before the meeting tomorrow night?
Yep.
That'd be great. I, I'd appreciate seeing it.
I'll send my email address.
That'd be great.
Well, send it tomorrow.
Okay, well, we're at our public comment period.
Can't tell if we have hope.
Um, so we can skip that and, but maybe any final words anyone wants to say about anything? Um, I'm trying, I'm calling up, a- as I call up a document to see the actual date of our next meeting.
September.
Okay, thank you.
I looked it up on the calendar.
All right.
Oh, Lucy, okay.
Oh, yeah, first Monday. Um, our next meeting is September 8th.
Yeah.
It's Wednesday. It is a Wednesday because September 6th is Memorial Day, uh, sorry, Labor Day. It is a Wednesday because September sixth is Memorial Day, sorry, Labor Day, and we don't, we can't meet on a holiday. So it is the Wednesday, so if everybody could check their calendars and let us know if that will work. And if we don't have a forum, we could look at the following Monday.
Right. And we expect it to be here, same format, okay?
Also, that the big screen, do I go on IMAX or?
No, we might, at some point, we might have a big screen in here. Might be, but at the next meeting.
AV part.
All righty, I guess we're done.
I move, we adjourn.
Okay.
All righty.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned, official, appreciated.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Bye.
Bye bye, have a good night.